November 22nd meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. Bow your heads, please. Our heavenly Father, God, thank you for this season, this American tradition of Thanksgiving, and as we enter it, may we really be thankful that we have America to live in. God bless us, and God bless our freedoms. Thank you for the greatest freedom of all, and that is the choice that we have to worship you and to thank you for your blessings, that we may have eternal life by accepting your plan for us, your Son, Jesus Christ. Be with us, God, as we conduct business for the county. May we make those decisions that are in the best interest for our county. Once again, God bless Rutherford County, the state of Tennessee, and the United States of America. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gail, do you want to call the row?
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught. Vincent Windrow.
Here.
Craig Lynch. We have a quorum.
Thank you. No items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Plat extensions, Mattington Cove, Dale?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got four plat extension requests. Each one of these subdivisions have asked for an extension for a year due to the economic situation, and they're not ready to close out their subdivision or to build a road or anything, so we recommend these requests be approved.
Without any objections, we'll just take them all at once.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mattington Cove, River Birch Estates, Richmond Retreat, Section 1, 12 Corners, Section 3. Motion, Steve Sandlin?
Second.
And second. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Last item on our agenda is a staff report dealing with the comprehensive plan. Dale?
Yes, Ms. Phillips, thank you. Yeah, I'll handle this part. Before you, just real quick, you'll see that the final draft of the comprehensive plan is before you. We're not going to be discussing that today. We're going to be having a public hearing on this at the December 13th Planning Commission meeting, so I just encourage you to take the copies. Those are your copies to take. If you have questions, please feel free to give us a call prior to the meeting, or if you just want to discuss things at the meeting, that's fine too. But we're very happy to be having this public hearing next month. A lot of hard work has gone into this, a lot of public input's gone into this, so this is the, again, the final draft of that, so just please go ahead and take it home. They'll give you something to read after you eat all that turkey on Thursday. You know, this will keep you awake. You know, the turkey puts you asleep, this will keep you awake, so that'll be good. We have with us today, part of our consultant team, we actually have Ms. Michelle Kendall, who's here with Parsons Brinkerhoff. We also have Randy Caldwell and Brett Smith with Reagan Smith Associates. They're going to be giving us a, just a brief presentation about the subdivision regulation process that we currently use. You'll know that the second part of the comprehensive plan process that we have going on right now, the first phase, again, is the plan, but the second phase is the update to the subdivision regs and also the zoning regulations. So we've had a couple of meetings with the consultant and have discussed several things, and we felt that it was at a spot where we'd like to make some presentation to you, planning commissioners, to talk about some of the processes we use in plat approval. There's also a couple of members of the steering committee here. When we started the meeting, I know that Susan Allen and Mayo Taylor were both here. I'm assuming that, yes, those are the two that are still here. So with that, I'll hand it over to our consultant team. I'm not sure who's going, Randy's, Mr. Caldwell's going first, so.
Good afternoon, I'm Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith, and happy to be here today. Please excuse my voice here, I've come down with a cold and I was at the game yesterday trying to do my part to help the Titans win, but as a result, I guess if I would've had my voice, maybe they would've actually won yesterday. So hopefully my voice is going to carry through through the rest of the meeting. As Doug said, you know, our charge is to rewrite your subdivision regulation. Many of you know, this is a very technical, dry document, so we've had several meetings. I've tried to make it as sexy as I could with a PowerPoint here, but one thing that came out of this, as Doug said, you know, we have had, you know, a little bit of a process that we've already been through, meeting a couple times with the staff. We've also had a meeting with some stakeholders, some of those in your engineering community that are responsible for implementing your subdivision regulations to get their input as well, as well as internally, our office is comprised of surveyors, land planners, landscape architects, civil engineers. We've done an internal review of the document as well, so we've also been through a little bit with the steering committee, just kind of touching on it, what the subdivision regulations are, and some of the input that we've gotten to this point. But one of the things that we discovered during this process that we really wanted to visit was the process that you undergo relative to the subdivision of land, and we have some recommendations that we wanted to carry forward, but we didn't want to really get into this till we got your feedback, because you are the body, basically, that reviews this on a monthly and bi-monthly basis. So before we went any further in rewriting the documents, we wanted to have this meeting to get your feedback, as well as any other concern that you as a body might have relative to any other thing involved with the subdivision regulation. So that's our purpose of being here today. You know, again, we've found some technical items, I'm not going to go down through these verbatim, but we've just basically been through each article with the staff and have defined some things that, you know, do need to be addressed as far as your regulations go, and again, much, much more technical in nature, but the biggest thing we want to talk about is the process. And let me just walk you through right now, I know many of you are very familiar with this, and what I'm going to do is show you what you do right now, how you kind of compare to some of the other jurisdictions here in Rutherford County, and what we're proposing. As you may or may not know, you know, anybody that comes in with something has to go through a pre-application meeting with the staff, and as part of that, they do have to submit a master plan for the staff to look at. That is something that you guys never do really see unless it's as part of the preliminary plat documents that gets submitted at a later stage, so that could take on any format, there's really no checklist associated with that. I think the staff, you know, has a certain expectation, but basically, it is looking at the entire property that is coming into place, and it is basically a preliminary layout of the whole development, where access is occurring, where the soils, fields are going to occur, you know, a number of things that we all know are part of a subdivision, but again, this is something that the staff just looks at, and then basically, the next step that comes in is your preliminary plat process, and that is staff review and planning, planning commission review and action. This is a much more technical document, and in fact, is really, and I was talking to Doug about this early, is probably 75 to 80 percent construction documents that you see and can be brought in as phases, so you don't, you are not necessarily looking at the whole picture on the front end, but it is very technically oriented, the storm drainage is usually worked out, traffic issues are typically worked out, it's preliminary utility design, et cetera. It's usually pretty extensive sheeted set of documents, this is one that Doug sent to me, a 22's sheet set of drawings, and again, the staff is going through a very exhaustive review on a preliminary engineering standpoint, but most cases, and Doug, you correct me if I'm wrong, there are just some minor, after this gets through the review process, basically there's some minor modifications to it, and then turned over into construction plans. So again, 80, 80 percent complete documents. From there on, it goes basically into construction document review, again, which you guys do not see, that final set of construction drawings, that is staff review only goes, goes through all the different departments, all the different state agencies as far as getting all the right permits in place before the contractor can move on with the construction of the project. And then, of course, the next time you see it is that final plat stage, when they are ready, basically, there's already some improvements have typically taken place, and the developer is ready to basically record some lots and sell some lots. So that, that is basically the process that you go through. I call it a four-step review process, but really only two, planning commission review and actions that take place as part of that. Now, how do you compare to other jurisdictions? And what we did, you can see on the left is basically the Rutherford County process, and you see Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Laverne, and you can see, basically, all of them require a pre-application meeting, you know, with the applicant before they make any formal submittals, but as you move down that chart on the right, basically, what you see is each of those jurisdictions has, and it takes on different connotations, whether it's concept plan, sketch plat, or whatever, they do have that process and step in place, and that is a planning commission action. From there, it pretty much follows right in line with the Rutherford County regs, but what they do have in there, they have an extra one-month step, you know, in their, in their review process. So that is what's currently going on, you know, within Rutherford County. Recap of what they're doing, other jurisdictions, five-step review process, three planning commission reviews and actions compared to basically our, your four-step, two planning commission review process. What we're proposing to do, and it's really taking information that is already being done by the applicant and reorganizing it a little bit, basically, to put before you the big picture. As a planning commission, you know, one of your goals is, should be to review things from a planning process and make good planning decisions. So our goal, one, a couple things, one, when we met with the engineering community, one thing they wanted to make sure they liked the process, at least, you know, how efficient it is relative to the number of hearings and that that take place. So we did not want to add any time to the current process, but again, what our goal was to get that, get this master plan in front of you so that you're looking at the comprehensive picture on the front end, which basically enables you to make good planning decisions at appropriate, with the appropriate level of information. Also, it helps, what we want to do is help to streamline, streamline the technical review component of the process by taking the responsibility of the technical review more into the planning staff and your engineering staff. You have a very competent staff there, basically, they're reviewing the documents for compliance with all the regulations that they have in place, and quite honestly, if that's all in place, if everything's in order, should make the approval process go through very smoothly, and I think that is what's occurring right now. So that was our goals, you know, what we were proposing to do is keep it to a four-step process with a pre-application meeting, and then we're just basically changing the preliminary plat from preliminary plat to preliminary plan. I'm going to show you a little bit here what we're requesting as part of the application, and then basically, construction plans, which are staff review, and then final plat, so again, keeping it at a four-step review process with only two planning commission reviews and actions. A little bit about what we're asking for as part of these different steps, again, the pre-application meeting is really just an informational meeting to give the opportunity for the developer to come before, developers applicant to come before the staff, sit down, discuss the project, so that we can help identify any potential concerns associated with the specific site, the site area, or development scenarios. You know, right now, you know, all, right now, as we showed you previously, a master plan is required as part of this, I mean, we're not asking for that as part of this step right now. I know myself, as an applicant, usually if I go in with a pre-application meeting, I'm going to have some sort of sketch, because I do want some feedback, you know, from the staff to make sure we're in the right direction, but one of the other reasons we're start, we're suggesting this too, is because we're going through a comprehensive land use plan right now, and coming out of that will be new zoning regulations, which we're anticipating have new zoning categories for different types of residential development, so that R-15 may not be as typical, so that's one of the reasons we're suggesting that as well. But alls we're asking for right now as part of this step is basically, you know, some exhibits showing where the property is, show it in context with the area that it's located in, and a written description of what is proposed for the development. It's as simple as just a location map, again, of this nature, shown on top of an aerial, which is very available through Google Maps and that, that basically you can plop that on top of there, and gives the staff the ability to look at the surrounding zoning, what roadways around there, what neighborhoods we're going to have to deal with, potentially deal with in the area, as well as identify any concerns that they're already aware in that area. So again, this is just a preliminary step to help identify what the issues are before the applicant gets too far into the process. From there, how does this differ? Again, the only part that's different on this is, again, that there's no master plan submitted as part, as part of this. That's up to the applicant whether he wants to or not, that's not something that we're requiring at this stage. Step two, again, preliminary plan, again, this is to review the development as a whole and define, discover all factors and issues that could impact the proposed development scenario of the property. So again, this is where we are looking for the layout proposed of the entire site. It is not, what we're trying to do is kind of marry some of the preliminary plat checklist items that you had before, and just not try to make it a real basic master plan, and there still are some decisions that have to be made and information that has to be looked at on the front end of this. We're trying to make it a little bit less technical in review relative to looking for the exact utility layout, exact storm drainage layout, what the detention pond is going to be, but we are looking, there are some things that are going to have some impact on the development that the developer needs to know upfront, and so there are going to be some traffic impact study thresholds that we want to identify where that might be required. We are looking for utility availability letters to make sure that there are not any issues associated with utilities out there before they get too far into the engineering and discover that. Of course, with the sensitivity relative to the step system, you know, where the soils going to occur on the site for the step system field on that. So again, we're going to create a new checklist for that, but basically, the final document, you know, that we're anticipating is going to look a little bit, little bit, look, a little bit like this. We're not looking for bearing and distances, but basically, the road network, where the connections are taking place, where the general area is for the step field, where is detention, where is water quality going to occur, and to a degree in generalities, leaving it up to the engineer and the staff, once they get into final construction plans, that they will be making sure that that complies with that plan. You know, one of the things with the current process with the preliminary plat is that there's a pretty significant amount of engineering work that goes in the front end, and basically, that's the first time you're seeing that, so that we feel this protects the developer applicant a little bit too, that basically, they know upfront with this master plan approval going before this board, what are the hot buttons, you know, are going to be being defined, what are the off-site improvements, traffic improvements that may need to occur, so basically, if they're submitting as a phase, they don't find that at the last phase, and all of a sudden, they've got some sort of off-site traffic improvement that they got to do as part of this. So we feel it protects both bodies on here. Nothing wrong with what's being done now, you know, that currently comes out of the process, but hopefully, what we're doing right now is defining this on the front end with this proposal. Again, how does this different from the current process, again, it's looking at the entire development, it's defining potential off-site improvements on the very front end, and again, just again, to reiterate, it's a little less technical information on the requirement front, hopefully, we're trying to balance, basically, what was real technical on the front end with less technical, but the traffic, looking at the traffic, some of those other issues, is going to balance off on what people are already spending on the process right now. Step three, again, is still going to be construction plans, you all know what that process is and the requirements for that, I'm not going to sit here and go through each one, but again, that's going to currently stay as it always has at a staff review level. No real difference other than potential minor adjustments to the checklist that's part of the subdivision regulations. We'll be sitting there going through that with staff and the development community as well, just to make sure that we're getting all the bases covered, and if there's any issues that have resulted that we can improve upon with this document, and then, of course, the final plat, and again, just minor, you know, we just anticipate minor modifications to that. So again, keeping it at the same little price now, you know, one of the things that starts to occur, you know, because we are asking for things a little bit less on the technical side with the master plan, is as you get into engineering, as you get into topo, things change a little bit as you start getting into the construction plans and the final layout. So we want to allow, you know, some flexibility to staff to make the determination when that would have to come back to the planning commission, so if there's some major modifications to the plan that might occur, once the developer, the engineers get into the implementation side of it, there may be some things that trigger having to have a revised master plan come back before the body. Typically, that would be changes in primary access points, reduction or reduction in the number of access points, that always seems to be a big item of concern, of course, increase in number of lots, maybe changes in, you know, use or function of open space or reduction, significant reductions in open spaces as part of that, reduction in the lot sizes. Those are some things we're just throwing out right now, and that we've got to work through with staff and others as far as defining what would actually trigger actually having to submit a revised master plan back before you, that has to go back to you before they can proceed on with the next phase of the project. So again, not trying to, you know, we want to allow some flexibility for changes to occur, if you guys are comfortable with that, depends on how comfortable you are with your staff on making those decisions, but we will be putting in some definite triggers that will, that will make that, make that happen.
What I was going to say, what, discuss that just a little bit, that makes the last one.
Need to allow flexibility for staff to, well, you know, if a road shifts 10 foot, or there's a little bit of different configuration and lots within a block or something like that, I mean, I would, I would say that, you know, it's, again, it's going to be what you guys, what you guys are comfortable with.
Yeah, there are some, especially, you know, with plats and site plans, you know, there are little things that we can look at administrative, they're called minor deviations, and the regulations kind of dictate what's a minor versus what's a major. Minors we can handle administrative, anything major has to come back to you, basically, it's the same process.
So anyways, again, that's what we're proposing, we didn't feel that we could, you know, continue to move forward with the process really till we presented this to you as a body, and wanted to, you know, came here today to get your input, you know, and as well as any other concerns you might have with the subdivision regulations, and that's what we're here to listen to you today, or if, you know, you need some time to think about it, please, you know, email the staff, and they, we've been through this process with the comprehensive plan, where basically, the stakeholders and others are feeding information back through the staff and then getting that to us. But we do plan on having, you know, several more meetings before this thing is firmed up, particularly, we've promised the development community, the engineering community, that we're going to keep them involved as we move through here, and we haven't picked up a piece of pencil to go ahead and start rewriting this, we've been through the information gathering phase of this, but we are ready at this point to pretty much move forward, you know, based on any other information you might give us today or within the next several weeks. So that's what we, that's what we wanted to come here this morning before we, before we move forward, and happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Sure. On the first couple of slides, you did a comparison between Rutherford County, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Laverne.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Were those processes, are they similar and consistent with across-the-nation processes? My point being, because we all live here, we could still have the same mindset whether we're in Rutherford County, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Laverne, are these also the best practices nationwide?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a fairly, most places you go, it's a fairly consistent process, the nomenclature, you know, changes a little bit, and really, the level of detail of information required where that preliminary plat is actually required or not. For example, like, when you go through more like a planned unit development in a lot of jurisdictions, or a, or whatever format, you know, that jurisdiction might have, a lot of times, you can go, because they have a very rigorous master plan submittal requirement as part of that, a lot of times, you will just see where they just go straight into construction plans, because that body has seen that document, you know, on the front end, and as we stated, our goal was to get all the issues out on the front end of the project, so that we all know what we're dealing with there, and then they're, they're going right into it, and staff is basically, you know, reviewing that to make sure that they are meeting that criteria. Now, if something comes up where an applicant all of a sudden says, I don't think I should, you know, adhere to that, then it's got to go back to the planning commission, you know, for consideration on that. So, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, you'll see this all across the board, and a lot of these are taken from, Tennessee has a boilerplate subdivision regulation, that you'll see a lot of these jurisdictions still have the old one that was in place, and you'll see a lot of places in Tennessee that basically have that same process throughout, throughout the state. But really, as engineers and planners, you know, that preliminary plat stage is a, you know, particularly when you're not seeing a master plan on the front end, that's a lot of investment on the developer's part, and a little bit of risk on his part going out there and putting all that effort into there when the planning commission could have, you know, might have a concern, you know, about something, and that kind of gets raised up when there's already been quite a bit of work done on the project, so. So hopefully, we're trying to, you know, if you have a good staff in place, good comfort level with them, you know, this, this makes the, you know, again, it gives the, planning commission hopefully is looking at the big picture, and that's one thing you should be doing as a body, you know, looking at, making sure that, you know, looking at the traffic, looking at the access points, you know, they're looking at it from an adherence to the zoning regulations, et cetera, but we all know there's other issues that kind of come into play once you look at the big picture. Any questions or concerns? Does the body feel comfortable with where we're going, or need time to think about it? Yes?
You may address just the difference in what we require in the big picture, not as much detail.
Again, it's just, it's just a little less deal, little less technical detail on the front end and more just the overall big picture.
And y'all should have this done by when?
I think we're scheduled March, is that when we're, yeah, by March is when we're scheduled to have it done.
So you're going to wait till, I guess, maybe the December to have any feedback or any additional things to look at, and then head forth into it?
Yeah, yeah, I think we've pretty much, you know, we've, we've at least been through the process as far as getting input. This is just something that jumped out at us that we did not feel comfortable with just giving you a draft copy of, and all of a sudden, you see this and go, well, why didn't anybody talk to us, you know, about that? We thought it was a big enough change. You know, like I say, most of the stuff that we're, that we've gotten feedback from is more to meeting Tennessee articulated code and some other cleanup of the document and that, so I don't think you'll be seeing, you know, very significant changes other, other than this, this right here. Your zoning document, your zoning regulations will be a little bit more, you'll see more related to that than subdivision. Like I said, subdivision regulations are pretty dry, very, very technical oriented. So my voice held out? Is any?
I guess I could, Doug, do you, he had brought up a question about, or he made a comment about checklist, do you have a checklist that you give in a pre-application meeting to, of course, I know, you know, when you're working with engineers that are used to working with the county, but if you have somebody just starting up, or, you know, somebody, do we have a checklist?
From a, yeah, from a pre-application standpoint, we don't. We do have checklists for preliminary plats and final plats and those kind of things, but as far as the, just the pre-application, not really. You know, like you said, most of the engineers and developers we work with, we've worked with in the past, they kind of know what to expect, what we're looking for, but we don't necessarily have any kind of a formalized process for the pre-application part of it. So, and I'll say, you know, we've talked, you know, to the, to our team quite a bit on this, we're actually pretty comfortable with what they're proposing, you know, we heard the concerns from the development community as well as not wanting to add another step into the process, and I really like about having the master plan on the front end before the planning commission, and Mr. Caldwell kind of alluded to this, well, I guess not kind of, he said it, that, you know, you're actually looking at the big picture, you've got it on the front end as the development is brought in, you've got it right in front of you, this is what this development's going to look like. It's not, you know, phase one of a particular development, and then, you know, you may not know what phase two is going to look like until it's sitting on your desk, you know, you've got the entire development and maybe broken up into phases, you know, on the plan, but it allows you, as a planning commission, to look at it as a, you know, the big picture scale, which is really what your function is, I mean, that's what you're supposed to be doing, so.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here today, and I guess we look forward to being here before you again, once this thing gets a little more cooked.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Doug, anything else?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, no, nothing else, just other than to say, I hope everybody has a very happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday.
Let me echo that. Busy time of the year, enjoy this week. Our next meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM in the courthouse.
Correct, December 13th.
On December 13th.
Public hearing on?
Yeah, the public hearing.
Public hearings on the?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have a couple, we'll have a few other items as well, but yeah, this will be on that.
We'll also have our potluck at 5:00 PM that same evening, over here.
Yes, and if you haven't already, letting Ms. Johnson-Nays know what you're going to be bringing, just give her a call. to be bringing, just give her a call and we'll, she'll make sure she gets that down.
Anything else?
So do we still have that, the 10th, are we still on for the 10th?
Oh, yes, the, the training, yeah, the works, yes, we are still on for the training session for the, yes, I believe it's December, I don't have the date right in front of me, but I believe that's correct, December the 10th, it's that Wednesday, it'll be at three a.
Wednesday, December the 8th?
Is it the 8th? Okay, yeah, if it's a Wednesday, then it's the 8th, yeah, that's great.
Three to 4:00 PM and that will be here.
Yes, that'd be in this room right here, yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? We're joined.
Thank you.